Good afternoon, all. This is Rick Hackettstaff. We are recording. You may begin.
Thanks, Rick. Good afternoon, everybody. This November 17th meeting of the Boulder County Planning Commission will now come to order. This is Commission Chair Sam Libby speaking. Due to COVID-19 concerns, this meeting is being held virtually. Information on how to participate in the virtual meeting has been posted to the Planning Commission website at www.boco.org/pc. There will be an opportunity to remotely provide public comment on the dockets listed in the agenda during the respective virtual public hearing portions for each docket item. I'll provide instructions about that when we get to each docket on the agenda. Take a roll call first for the commissioners. Sam Libby here. Dave Su.
Here.
Melanie Eskey.
Here.
Leishan Gorgano.
Here.
Mark Bloomfield.
Here.
Sam Fitch.
Here.
And Ann Goldfarb.
Here.
Thank you. Reminders for the commissioners, please identify yourself when you speak and speak slowly and clearly. We'll do roll call votes with names in the order I just called them. Please keep your video on if possible and identify yourself as you begin to make a comment. Okay, so we've done our roll call. First agenda item is going to be review and approval of minutes. Are there any corrections or comments on the minutes or a motion to approve?
I'd move to approve. This is Commissioner Goldfarb speaking.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bloomfield, my second.
All right, thank you. A second. No discussion, I'll assume. So I'll take a vote. Sam Libby, I, Dave.
I.
Melanie.
I.
Leishan.
I.
Mark.
I.
Sam.
I.
And Ann.
I.
All right, motion passes. Thank you. Are there any staff updates from CPP staff?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Kim Sanchez, Deputy Director of Community Planning and Permitting. We do not have any updates for you today.
Okay, thank you. Hearing no updates, move on to our agenda. We have three docket items scheduled today for the Planning Commission meeting. I'll take a moment now to explain the hearing process. There'll be an opportunity to provide public comment through the Zoom meeting remotely on each of the subject items for those that we do have public testimony for, which I think is all three. We'll first hear a presentation from CPP staff, then the applicant can present and we'll move on to public comment after that for many individuals that wish to speak. You may have signed up in advance to the website. If you have signed up, we'll call on you first. We have a list we'll refer to for that. If you did not sign up, you can still sign up now by putting your name in the chat along with which docket item you wish to speak on. When you speak, please give your name and your address for the record and then direct your comments to us at Planning Commission here. I'll direct any questions to staff that arrive, that arise during that meeting or that discussion or to the applicant. Once we've heard all testimony, we'll close public hearing. We'll then discuss and take a vote on an action if necessary. Everyone will have a chance to speak. If you didn't sign up or are not able to sign up in the chat, you are able to speak by phone. If you're on the computer, you can put your name in the chat, et cetera, through Zoom. Let us know if you need help speaking at that level. And then if you've joined from the phone, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine. We'll then unmute you when we call on you. And then you'll press star six to unmute yourself and be able to speak at that time. Whether you're on the phone or on the Zoom, everyone will have three minutes to speak. And the timer will beep at the end of speaking time. You'll hear it through the audio. We can support pull time with three minutes per person, up to a maximum of 10 minutes for four people pulling time together. We'll need the names, addresses of those other people at that time. And everybody who wants to pull time has to be in attendance when it's your turn to speak. We ask that you please do not submit comments in the chat box. The chat is to be used for signups for the presentation or for the public comment only. And is not to be used for comments or chats outside of that. And if you are attending, please remain unmuted when possible. The public will not be offered a chance to share screens. It'll be applicant will be offered a chance to share a screen if you wish to present. Okay. With all that, if any questions, please feel free to reach out and look at the website and then we'll move into our docket items for today. Get that pulled up. Our first item is a public hearing that will open for docket SU-21-0003, Smetana Partnership LLC, a special use marijuana store. I believe we'll have a staff presentation first from Summer.
Yes. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Summer Frederick with Community Planning and Permitting. And let me share my screen. I'm hoping that you can see the full screen.
We see presenter view, so if you can swap in the display settings.
Got it.
Should do that.
How's that?
We see the presentation now. If you go back in at the top of the screen, there's, if you go back to presenter view.
Okay. Tell you what. Are you seeing the PowerPoint?
We can go through from here if that works. So we can see the screen, okay? It's not going to share for you.
For some reason, it's not letting me go to the slideshow. Let me give it one more shot.
Yeah, maybe close out the whole presentation and open again.
All right. Third time's a charm.
Looks good.
All right, there we go. Okay. This is docket SU-21-0003, Smetana Partnership. And the owner is Smetana Partnership LLC. The agent for this application is Michael Foot. The original proposal for this docket was to allow an increase of up to 250 average, excuse me, average daily trips on a parcel with an existing marijuana establishment. The revised proposal or application is to allow an increase of up to 400 average daily trips on a parcel with an existing marijuana establishment. The parcel is located at 7521 Ute Highway, which is the northeast corner of the intersection of Ute Highway and North 75th Street. The parcel is zoned business and existing on the parcel is a 3,500 square foot structure, 360 square feet of which is used for marijuana retail sales. The remaining 3,140 square feet is used for storage, staff meeting space, restrooms, and non-marijuana retail. So this is the vicinity map and the parcel is highlighted there, the little red dot essentially in the middle of the screen with North 75th Street and Ute Highways identified. And then down here, excuse me, south of the parcel is the area of hygiene. And you can see here to the southeast is Longmont and Ute Highway does extend to the northwest into Lyons. And this is the zoning map, so you can see the subject parcel here at the top of the screen at the major intersection is zoned business while it is surrounded to the north by agricultural zoning. To the south is rural residential. And then again, down here farther south, this commercial area is hygiene. So this is the regional aerial and this just gives you an idea somewhat of the parcel configuration and you can see that there are smaller and more parcels to the south and to the north are the larger parcels that are in active agricultural use. And these are closer in aerials. The one on the left shows you an aerial of the intersection with the subject parcel outlined in red. And then the even closer view shows you the configuration of the parcel with the existing structure on the southern portion of the parcel. And then of note, there are three accesses shown here. The southern two, the southern one onto North 75th, and then the one that accesses onto Ute Highway. These are both closed and they are closed right now by a low hanging chain. The open active access to the parcel is this one, the northern one on North 75th Street. So to give a little background on this application, in 2017, a site plan review application was submitted for a change of use from an eating and drinking establishment without a drive-through service to a marijuana establishment. Staff did issue a determination letter for that site plan review application. The Board of County Commissioners decided to call it up to a public hearing. And then in December of 2017, the Board of County Commissioners upheld the director's determination with two additional conditions, one of which, the one that is most relevant to the application that is in front of you now is shown here on the screen. And that one restricted the average daily trips to the parcel, to and from the parcel to 150. And it required that the applicant do traffic counts at six months and 18 months after the use commences. And so in accordance with that condition, the applicant did conduct those traffic counts and the results exceeded 150 average daily trips. And so because of that, the applicant submitted this special use application per Article 4-109F2 of the Land Use Code, which states that in the business district, any use that generates traffic volumes in excess of 150 ADT does require approval of an SU docket. The applicant had originally applied for an increase of up to 250 ADT. However, staff identified an error in the traffic study, which essentially was that the trips in and the trips out had not been added together to create, to come up with the total ADT. And so the numbers that the applicant was working with were not the correct numbers. And so as a result of that, of identifying that error, the applicant submitted revised application materials that included a new narrative, a revised traffic impact study, and additional count, traffic count numbers for a week earlier in the year than what had originally been in the traffic impact study. And that week is February 27th through March 5th of 2021. And that caused the applicant to now request an increase to a maximum of 400 ADT. And these revised materials are what is, what were used for the current analysis and staff recommendation. So this was referred out and access and engineering did identify that legal access was demonstrated. They did agree with the transportation impact studies findings and conclusions. And they indicated that the range of the daily trip counts being different between the two periods, the one at the end of February into March and the one in April is normal because retail businesses, retail business is anticipated to fluctuate throughout the year. And the, this team did not anticipate that the increase to a maximum of 400 ADT will have an adverse impact on the surrounding transportation network. They did make recommendations that additional onsite parking spaces be constructed and/or identified and that additional work be done to the two currently closed access points to make those closures either more permanent or more obvious to vehicular traffic. The County Historic Preservation Team did submit this to the Historic Preservation Advisory Board and HPAB did review it and agreed to support the proposal as submitted. And that board and staff both recommend that the applicant and/or property owner consider applying for landmark status of the structure in the future. So there were several agencies with no comments, Building and Safety, Building Safety and Inspection Services, County Parks and Open Space, Long Peak Water District, Excel Energy, and then there is a longer list of those agencies that had no comment. Adjacent property owner notices were sent out to 25 adjacent property owners, four of whom responded with comments and an additional one was received by staff this morning, which was sent to you via email earlier today. The comments were both in support and opposition of the application. And those comments included questions about the comparisons of the, from the original application of 250 ADTs to similar small rural retailers in the county requesting to allow more time for the public to comment. Concerns related to traffic increases and safety, misleading information in the applicant's submission materials, and incompatibility of the traffic increase and use with the goals of the Boulder County Comprehensive Plan. In relation, sorry, in relation to the app, the comment that was forwarded to you today, I will note that the use of a marijuana establishment was approved through the previously approved site plan review. And what is before you today is the level of or intensity of that use at 400 ADT. And that's what is being considered today through this application. So this was reviewed against the applicable articles in the land use code. And the first one of those in 4-601 is that the use will comply with the minimum zoning requirements of the zoning district. Again, this is in the business zoning district. And the S, as previously stated, the SPR 17-0059 did approve the marijuana establishment use. And traffic volumes in excess of 150 ADT are allowed through the approval of an SU application. And then number two, the use will be compatible with the surrounding area. They are, the applicant is not proposing to change the structure at all or change any of the other business operations such as the hours, number of employee, employees onsite. And this, as I said, this parcel is zoned business and is located at the intersection of a collector road, which is North 75th, and a principal arterial, which is State Highway 66 or Ute Highway. And that SPR back in 2017 changed from the use, which essentially was a sit-down restaurant to the marijuana establishment. And using the ITE Traffic Generation manuals, the Institute of Transportation Engineers, Traffic Generation manuals, a 35,000 square foot sit-down restaurant that only serves dinner and is open six days a week generates approximately 290 ADT for that use. So the previous use that was on this site, you know, generated traffic at that level of 290, 80, or had the potential to generate traffic at 290 ADT. And so again, this is right at the intersection of a relatively heavily used road, which is State Highway 66 and Ute Highway. So given all of that and with recommended conditions of approval, staff finds that this criterion can be met. So number three is the use will be in accordance with the Boulder County Comprehensive Plan. And I just want to touch on again that the Cultural Resources 1-1.03.01 states that the Historic Preservation Advisory Board shall be a referral agency for all land use proposals where possible impact cultural resources have been identified. And Boulder County will seek protection of significant resources through local designation or other protective means when a proposal by the private sector is subject to discretionary development review. And although the applicant is not proposing to make any changes to the existing structure, again, HPAB and staff recommend that the property owner considers applying for landmark status of that structure. And so criteria number seven, the use will support a multimodal transportation system and not result in negative impacts to the transportation system or traffic hazards. According to the traffic study that was, the traffic impact study that was supplied, there was no pedestrian traffic counted or observed during the traffic counts in April. There are no RTD bus stops within three miles of the property. Again, there are no pedestrian sidewalks. However, there are existing shoulder or lanes for bicyclists along North 75th. And staff anecdotally knows that there is bike traffic that utilizes Ute Highway or State Highway 66. And so because of that, bike parking and improvements to those two closed access points are recommended as conditions of approval to meet this criterion. And so with that general summary and the details that are in your staff recommendation packet, Community Planning and Permitting staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend that the Board of County Commissioners conditionally approve docket SU-21-0003, Smetana Partnership, subject to the conditions outlined in the staff recommendation. And I also have those on subsequent slides if needed for further discussion. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, thank you, Summer. Any questions for staff?
This is Commissioner Shu. I have a few questions. One, just for clarification, for the February to March 2021 ADT, there are three numbers in the packet for, for what that was, 328, 339, and 338. I think it's 338, but can you confirm what that number should be?
I believe you are correct with 338. Yes. I apologize for the confusion.
And then just generally with like the conclusion that it doesn't have an adverse effect on the transportation network. I, I've seen these traffic studies before. I never really understand how to interpret that. So what does it mean that there's no adverse impact? Because, you know, there is some impact. Why is it not adverse? What would make it adverse?
So within the traffic study document, there was, there were tables and I'm, I can pull them up, but I'm forgetting exactly which ones that talk about the level of service of the intersection. And a level of service is essentially boiling it way down is how long a car has to wait to get through the intersection. And so if you look at those, those charts, there is one that establishes the level of service currently. Then there's one that establishes the level of service in 2040, in the year 2041. There are actually two for that. And the one, there is one for the year 2041 that does not take into account the proposal. So the increase, the increase to ADT. And then there's another one that takes into account the proposal. And if you look at those, the level of service in the year 2041 doesn't change between the two. So essentially adding this much traffic to the site will not, in, will not speed up the deterioration of the level of service at this intersection. And the, sorry, the other point is that, you know, the current ADT on State Highway 66 or Ute Highway, I think CDOT listed it at 11,000. And then for North 75th, the county has put it at approximately 1,500. And so, you know, for looking at those numbers and adding 400, that is a pretty small percentage to add to that, those numbers.
Okay, with respect to the 2041 projections for level of service, there, if I remember, they're kind of bad, right, in 2041, so.
There's level, level D, I believe.
Yeah. And so it doesn't make it worse than that. Do we have a comparison for like now? Or is that just the ratio of, you know, 400 or 250 additional over, you know, the current amount?
So there is a current for this year and I'm forgetting, I believe the current level of service for the intersection is C. Let's see. Yes. Well, so it's B in the, in the morning and C in the afternoon during peak hours. And then in 2041, it's C in the morning and D in the afternoon.
And do we have a projection of what increasing 250 ADTs does to the current level of service?
Um. Let's see. And the applicant can probably back up this information and probably has it more quickly. I don't have it off the top of my head.
Okay. And then so, you know, you mentioned Ute Highway with a 11,000 ADT, but there's also North 75th Street with 1550 ADT. And only access can be, to the site can be through North 75th Street. So do we, is, is, does the analysis consider that all the increase in ADT must go through North 75th Street?
So, so staff did consider that. And the fact that the entrance for the, the access point for the parcel is the first access point from the intersection. So traffic coming either from northbound from South 75th or north, the southern part of North 75th, or either direction on Ute Highway would turn north onto or continue north onto North 75th. So they would only be, so that amount of traffic would only be on North 75th for that short span between the intersection and the access point to the parcel.
Okay, thank you.
This is Commissioner Goldfarb. Oh, go ahead, Sam.
That's it. I was just thinking, other questions? Go for it.
Yeah, this is Commissioner Goldfarb. I have a question in regard to the average daily trips. So what, what happens? I guess I'm thinking, so a business is really successful and they have more average daily trips than what they've been allotted. They come up for a special use review. But at what point, I mean, what's the use of this if businesses just keep increasing their traffic because they're doing so well?
So the idea is that we are reviewing the, the 483 ADT under this docket. And so this level of intensity is what is being reviewed now. And staff has done the analysis and our recommendation, our analysis and recommendation is that we are finding that we don't think this level of intensity will have adverse impacts to the transportation network and that it is in line with the, the business zoning district as it stands, as the parcel stands now. That doesn't mean that the next time this comes in or any other business comes in for an increase in ADT, that our analysis will be the same. So you know, it, the, the You know, it, the, the purpose of capping them is to say we are. Staff is finding that we think. This level of intensity for this site is okay at this, at this level. But. We're not, we aren't, we haven't analyzed a higher level of intensity. And if this business gets to a higher level of intensity, then we'll have to analyze that. And, you know, there's the same possibility that we may find that it isn't, it is. Compatible with this area with this parcel, or we may say that's too intense for this parcel. And we don't recommend approving. And then the business would need to make adjustments to remain within what they're approved for.
So those, this is Commissioner Goldfarb again. So those adjustments that you're talking about. Might be something like limiting hours to eliminate, to limit trips, that sort of thing. Is that what we're talking about? Okay, yep, all right. Thank you.
Commissioner Bloomfield, I have a couple of questions. Summer, um. You had mentioned that basically special use review allows for greater than one hundred and fifty ADTs. Is there any guidance on what an upper limit might be, or is it just open ended as far as? The hug of greater than one hundred and fifty ADTs?
The code just says greater than one hundred and fifty ADTs. There isn't any. Any language that speaks to what a maximum may be.
Okay, thanks. And then the other question was. You had mentioned that that there was a restaurant there and that the IT. For a dinner only restaurant is two hundred ninety ADTs?
Two hundred ninety eight, yes, that's.
Two hundred ninety eight, thank you.
Two hundred, I'm sorry, two hundred ninety, two nine zero.
Okay.
Yes.
And and do they give an hours range for a dinner business?
That I don't know, but it, I do know that. The only hour that I saw was that it anticipated customers being there for an hour at a time.
Right, so longer than than would be the case here, but.
Yeah, yep.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else before we go to the applicant? Okay, hearing none, we can answer questions for now and go to the applicant for a presentation if they're here.
This is Anna Milner, staff. I'm promoting the applicants now.
All right, hi, Mike, we can see you. And welcome to present. I think you have up to twenty minutes and while the timer going, if you need that long.
Great, thank you very much. And good afternoon again, commissioners. My name is Mike Foot and. I'm an attorney and live and work in Lafayette. And with me, I think down at the corner of the screen now is Dan Pabon, who is. General counsel of the applicant. So I'll be speaking first for maybe five or six minutes and then we'll hand it over to him. And I don't think either of us have a PowerPoint presentation to share with you at this point. Um, so as the staff presentation noted, we're back. And we regret taking your time again and apologize for the issue with the original traffic impact analysis. Once the error was discovered, we went back to the drawing board, basically, and kind of went through the thought process again. About what we should request that will work for an existing business. And also be consistent with low impacts on the surrounding area and surrounding transportation network. So first, we took a look again at both of the traffic volume count measurements that were done by IDAX. Earlier this year in the spring, and you have both of those in your packet. Uh, one was during the week of February twenty seventh. And the other was during the week of April seventeenth. The February twenty seventh traffic count showed an ADT of three hundred twenty eight. And the April seventeenth traffic count showed an ADT of three fifty eight. The April seventeen traffic count was taken during the busiest week of the year for the business, but even then it showed just an extra thirty ADT. Or as we know, fifteen vehicles over the course of that week averaged out compared to a couple of months prior. So, we took that information and assumed that there would be customer growth over time. Um, we're not seeking to expand the physical structure or anything like that, but. We do hope to continue to grow our customer base just like any other business would. Um, we didn't think that it would make a lot of sense to just request the kind of traffic we were currently seeing. So like requesting the three fifty or three sixty ADT. Or else there would be a need to come to see you again with another request in the near future and. I'm assuming he preferred not to have to see us again for a third time anytime soon. So. We wanted to account for a natural customer growth that successful businesses typically see. We also, another element of what we looked into is we also wanted to. Compare it with another retail business that was in a similar zoning situation. And figure out what kind of traffic that they were actually seeing. Unfortunately, there's not a lot of properties like that in Boulder County. As noted in the staff report, there's only three other properties like that, actually. And one is a restaurant at thirty six and left hand Canyon, which is not really comparable. Because its customer patterns are going to be a lot different than a retail establishment like Starbucks. The other is, uh, it's an animal hospital, I believe, on Highway two eighty seven, um, close to where I live in Lafayette. And, uh, and again, that's not really very comparable. So the closest we could get was the convenience mini mart and gas station at the intersection of twenty, uh, I'm sorry, of Seventy Fifth. In Arapahoe, so Seventy Fifth and Arapahoe in Boulder County, obviously. And that parcel is business owned, but surrounded by either agricultural or rural residential. And there's a mini mart on the eastern end of the property, but also a building with some offices, including a marijuana dispensary on the western end of the parcel. So the question we had was, what kind of traffic was that parcel getting? So again, we asked IDAX to measure traffic on a recent Friday and Saturday, just to see. And it was, it was not. It was a little complicated, I guess, because there are three entrances and exits to that property as opposed to the one entrance and exit at Starbucks. And the mini mart has longer hours than Starbucks, but we asked them to measure the traffic for the same time period as they did with Starbucks, which was. Eight AM to eight PM. And what IDAX found was that the Seventy Fifth and Arapahoe property saw a four twenty seven ADT. So four hundred twenty seven ADT during those two days of measurement. So again, you know, we realize it's not totally apples to apples, although I think pretty close. But we just wanted to kind of get a feeling for what a similar property in Boulder County would be seeing presently and. We provided all that information to the staff. And, uh, but it was right around the time they were about to submit their recommendation to you, so. It doesn't look like that information made it into your packet, so we wanted to bring it up here today at the presentation. But of course, we'd be happy to provide it to you if you wanted to take a closer look at it at any time. Bottom line, though, is that it showed a four hundred twenty seven ADT for those two days that were measured. And that was just in its normal course of its business. So anyway, that measurement kind of confirmed to us that we were in the ballpark with our four hundred ADT request. At least compared to what another retail business in the county surrounded by non-business parcels was getting. And we're thankful to the, that the staff agrees that our four hundred ADT request is also in the ballpark and consistent. With the county's special review criteria and should be therefore approved. The staff notes, and of course, obviously, we agree. That the request would not have a significant impact on the surrounding area or the surrounding transportation network. The staff recommendation notes, and also you heard in the presentation. That the volume of traffic already at that intersection, uh, which is over eleven thousand on Highway sixty six and over fifteen hundred on Seventy Fifth Street. As you know, I'm sure this is already a pretty well traveled area of the county. But four hundred ADT total at Starbucks. Or an extra two fifty ADT over what's currently allowed would be a very small fraction of the traffic that already exists in that area. So, uh, the bottom line here, of course, is we hope you all agree as well and grant the four hundred ADT request. Uh, because it is consistent with the Boulder County property plan, the code. And, um, as I was saying before, it's. It's in the ballpark of what we see, at least with this one other fairly comparable business in the county, so. You know, we, we, we think the four hundred is appropriate and I hope that you will too. So that's all for my part of the presentation here and thanks again for your consideration. I'd like to hand this over to Dan Pabon at this point, who, uh, I think will have a few more remarks. And then, of course, we're always happy to answer any questions or engage in further dialogue as you wish.
Mister Chair, is it okay if I proceed?
Yeah, sorry, I thought you just go for it, go for it.
Okay, no, I, I, I'm, uh, stickler for protocol, so I want to make sure I have.
Please carry on, yeah.
Um, commissioners, thank you. As, uh, our council said, appreciate your indulgence. Having to look at this for a second time, uh, certainly don't want to, um, take a lot more of your time on this. Uh, just to say a couple of things. One, we certainly, um. Uh, believe it's a privilege to operate and work in Boulder County. And want to work in partnership with the commission, uh, planning commission, as well as the county commissioners to ensure. That our operations are safe, sound, and provide, uh, a, a. Very useful product to our customers, our consumers, your constituents. So. Uh, that, that is our, our main, uh, uh, purpose of asking for this increased. Uh, ADT as, um, Mister Foot indicated. We've, we've spent a lot of time sort of considering, uh, the, in, you know, the, the previous ADT as well as. Uh, you know, what a comparable store would do in the, uh, in a similar footprint, again, not the same. Uh, but, but similar and found that this increased ADT. Uh, would better accommodate our, uh, you know, traffic flow, our customers. And, um, and, and just to reiterate, we are not asking for any other deviations from the. Um, conditional, uh, use requirements. So we're not asking for an increased retail footprint. We're not asking for increased hours. Um, we're simply asking for the ability to, uh, accommodate more individuals who are coming on, uh, to our property. That's about all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bonn. Uh, nothing else for comments and applicant. Uh, thank you for your comments. Uh, do we have any questions for the applicants from the commissioners?
This is Commissioner Shu. I always have questions, as you can see. Uh, so one point of clarification. You mentioned that the February to March twenty twenty one ADT was three twenty eight. Um, I'd asked staff before and. We thought it was three thirty eight. So what is the number from February to March?
Um, if you give me a minute, Commissioner, I can, um, go back and look at the primary report there. I thought I'd reviewed it before I said that, but now I realize that we conflict with the, um, staff presentation, so. Uh, give me a moment and I'll go back and take a look at the actual numbers, if you don't mind.
Okay. Yeah, I, I don't know. I have other questions, but if someone else wants to ask minor more, actually, before, before you. I, I have another number of questions to ask, maybe when you are looking through. So, um, I'd ask staff about the impact of level of service. On today's, um, or the, uh, today's level of service, you know, with or without the ADTs. I don't know if that's in the packet. It's certainly there for twenty forty one. Uh, but that's hard for me to understand what that impact is today, uh, rather than twenty years in the future. So if you could. Find that comparison, that'd be great, too. Thanks.
Commissioner, um, I'm gonna, I, I pulled up the information that we have on the February twenty seventh. Traffic counts and, um, hopefully I'll be able to have it up here to share the screen with you.
We can see that now.
That's, that's what we're looking at. So one sixty nine in, one sixty nine out. Is what it showed. So I guess if my math's right, that's what, uh, three thirty eight?
Okay, um, and then, do you know if there's a comparison of the impact on today's level of service with? The extra, um, two hundred fifty ADT?
Uh, were you talking about the level of service at the, uh, that, that's, that was talked about in the traffic analysis, the question that you asked the staff earlier?
Correct.
Um, so I don't recall anything in the traffic impact analysis that indicated that the level of service would be affected by an extra two fifty ADT. Um, I, I think that, uh, there was no finding in the traffic analysis to that effect. And hopefully that's what you were getting at with that question.
Well, I, I guess more specifically, was there a comparison, was there an actual? Determination of level of service with the extra two hundred fifty ADT? I see the absence of information. I don't see. Anything saying that there's no impact.
I don't recall a kind of the, that kind of comparison that you're asking about in the traffic impact analysis.
Okay, um, and then, um, with the last meeting. I had expressed concerns about the measurement of ADT in the setting of it, so I, I wanted to ask this again, um, and. Maybe it's phrased better this time. So my question is, why should the ADT be set? Above the busiest time of year and then verified at a time of year that's less busy than the busiest time of year?
Yes, um, certainly, I think Dan and I both recall that conversation and, you know, it was a good conversation about measurement. Um, and you know what, what we had said last time, although I think maybe not as artfully as we could have is that, um. Well, and I, I should say also, I think some of the other commissioners kind of mentioned this point too, which was. The point of the ADT is in fact an average, average daily trips. Um, it's, it's not. Something that's measured by only the busiest day of the year. And the, the other thing that we brought up was when you're measuring ADT. Anywhere else in the county or anywhere else, I guess, that, that measures that particular metric. We're not aware of the, of other retailers that, uh, that, that, where it has to be measured. On the busiest day of the year. So, you know, last time we talked about. Uh, other retailers during Black Friday, for example, which would be one of the busiest times of the year. Um, and then there's other retailers where it ebbs and flows. And that was also mentioned in the staff report that it's normal that with retailers, their traffic ebbs and flows. So what we're asking for when it comes to measurement is just to treat us like any other type of business. Treat us like any other kind of retailer. And, um, of course, we recognize that there's one week that's busier than the other fifty one weeks. Um, not terribly much so, though, which is why I mentioned in my remarks that it was, um, an extra thirty ADT, I believe I said. During that busiest week as opposed to the non-busiest week or, you know, another week. Um, but, uh, we, I guess, don't believe that. That, or, or we're speculating this, but we don't think that you would. Ask another retailer to just measure during Black Friday week or during the week before Christmas. And so we would just ask for a similar consideration here where we measure average daily trips and they really are average instead of just during the busiest periods.
Thank you.
Commissioner Libya, I had one small question. Thanks for sharing the comparison to the convenience store at Arapahoe and Seventy Fifth. The, the number that you quoted for that for the ADTs, I think, was four hundred and twenty something. It's not important specifics, but. Was that for the entire development or for the marijuana store at that development?
It was for the entire parcel, Commissioner. It, um, because the measurements occur at the entrances and the exits. And not necessarily one particular store. So we wanted to measure the ingress and egress. The vast majority of traffic at that particular parcel comes from the convenience store. Um, and I'm just saying that from anecdotal, you know, being around it and seeing it a lot. Um, but, uh, but we didn't measure a particular, you know, marijuana establishment versus the other office parts of the building on the western side of the parcel.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions for the applicant, applicants? Okay, thank you both for the presentation and the comments. We'll move on from the applicant presentation to public comment. Okay, so we got through that. Um, we're going to go through the list of the two people who signed up ahead of time that are in the chat. Uh, then we'll take any comment from anybody else on Zoom or on the phone who wants to speak. Um, if you could, please put your name, the docket number and your, uh, in both of those in the chat, if you do want to speak, why did the list? As a reminder, you have three minutes. Once you start, you're welcome to share video or not. And we'll have a timer that goes off when that's completed. And we'll start with Dan Burkhart as the first person on the list. Dan, are you with us? We can't hear you if you're speaking. And Dan, you might be muted. If not, we'll move on and come back to you. All right, is Peter Rogers here?
This is Dan. I figured out how to unmute. You can hear me now. Sorry.
Yeah, no problem, Dan. You have three minutes. Go ahead. If you can share your address, please, as well.
Yeah, again, my name is Dan Burkhart, 11887 North 75th Street. Hello, and thank you all. I spoke at the last time we had a public hearing with you guys. Here we are again. We are strongly opposed to this huge expansion in appropriate requests. COVID timing and effect on traffic backgrounds is being manipulative and misleading. And it's also very offensive to hear how the staff recommended that they do this now and are coaching them through the process. That's per the applicant's own admission. I'm asking questions and I know you can't respond, but have you ever been to this area? Question. Have you ever studied this area? Have you ever driven a tractor or a major trailer facility vehicle through this area? Or have you ever biked through this area? I wanted to mention that I feel like a lot of the statements are false. They make statements like that their operations are very steady throughout the day and it never works that way. There's always a peak timing. They say that they're very steady through the day so that it diminishes the impacts and the peaks are the key. It's inaccurate and it skews the traffic analysis. There are real AMP and peaks in that area. The level of service is already being talked about. It's a brand new Highway 66, multimillion dollar improvement, paint's not even dry, and it's already at a low level of service and it will be impacted. The whole premise of this application revolves around untrue statements and key assumptions, nor is it accurate regarding the actual traffic impacts in its proper real-life context. There's a huge amount of farming going on out there. There's a lot of traffic for semis, tractors, trailers, left-turn movements, and a huge amount of commuting PM and AM traffic counts. And this will seriously lower the level of service and consequently increase huge safety concerns. There's also bike traffic that they completely disregard. County barely brings it up. It's a huge issue out there. We're constantly bombarded with bike races. They have to have state patrol, police. And because I'm very active in the hygiene community businesses, just down 75th, that level of service there is already failing. We have PM and AM peaks that back up past the school on the north and past Pellicrossing on the south. And this is when we're still in COVID remote working. So the the timing is trying to manipulate the COVID background. See, what happens is the background analysis affects the level of service. Well, we've all been in lockdown. We're barely coming out of it. Traffic is going back up. But I have proof of of numbers. Did I run out of time?
Yes, thank you, Dan.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
All right, and Peter Rogers, you're next. Don't have you yet, Peter. You can unmute on Zoom.
There we go.
Yep, can hear you now. Thank you.
All right, thank you. My name is Peter Rogers. My address is 885 Arapahoe Avenue in Boulder. As further background and for context, I was a founding member of the Hygiene Community Association almost 10 years ago. I did have a law office in hygiene for several years. I am speaking as an individual, not on behalf of the Hygiene Community Association. And I understand from staff comment that the email which I sent late last night apparently did get sent to everybody. Okay, good. Then I won't read. I won't read that, so you already have that information. My major concern is clearly there is an impact on traffic. The increase in deaths, traffic deaths in the state of Colorado and the increase in traffic deaths where marijuana was involved are what a stark contrast. 138% increase in between 2013 and 2020 in traffic deaths where marijuana was involved. And overall, traffic deaths in that same period increased 29%. There is a huge impact to traffic and to lives in Boulder County and the whole state of Colorado if there's an increase in average daily trips. The increase that's being requested is almost double what their current license limitation is now. And I just urge, urge the commissioners to look at this for what it really is. There is a huge increase and these numbers, these traffic numbers were issued, were collected during COVID. All of us remember what it was like. The roads were almost empty. But this intersection, there are bicycle races almost every other week, bikers all the time. I've ridden my bike in that area many times. And I just don't think there's been adequate consideration of the safety level that is, I believe, is being violated here. The Colorado statutes, as I mentioned in my letter, require you to look at and consider public safety. And when you're looking at it, look at lessening the congestion on the roads and the streets. Highway 66 is already heavily traveled. North 75th Street.
Thank you for your comments. I have not seen any other signups in the chat. Anna, is anybody else on the list yet? I don't think so.
This is Anna Mulderstaff. No.
Okay, and there's no one on the phone that I can see. So I think that's everyone who wishes to speak. Thank you for your comments. All right, I'm going to go ahead and say that's the end of the public comments. And we'll move on now to any final questions to staff applicants, the applicants or other speakers and clarifying statements from staff. So first, I think commissioners, do we have any additional questions before staff? Thanks for the clarifications. All right, seeing none, Summer, anything you'd like to add?
I don't believe so.
Okay. And any responses from the applicants to any of the comments made by the public? Mike or Dan hearing none? Okay, thank you. So we'll go ahead and close public hearing on this docket at this time. I will move into our own discussion and open that up for any discussion from commissioners. All right, I'll go ahead and start. I was not here for this, Commissioner Libby. I was not here for the previous review. I think I was not present that session. But as I reviewed the materials and listened to the presentation, I think a couple of things that I wanted to, I guess, state that are forming my reasoning. First, I think, you know, my understanding is that the measurements that were made this previous February, March indicate that the current ADTs are already well in excess of 150 that's allowed by the previous approval. And so at 338 or whatever the number was at this current date, we're basically already at that present state, right? So this is already happening and all the measurement of level of service already reflects that current level of trips. And so the approval to 400 to me is really reflecting that change has already happened and giving a ceiling to what growth should happen on top of that. And so I find that to be fairly reasonable in that, you know, the current assessment of level of service wouldn't change with the addition of 60 or 70 additional trips per day from what there is right now. So that's, I think, I think helpful in thinking about it, that it's not saying we're approving 250 and they'll suddenly start tomorrow. They're already happening. And this is an approval of the correct ceiling to set that up. I do have personal experience biking through this area, driving through the area. I know the intersection very well. And I'm personally not familiar with issues that occurred during rush hour at that time. Though I think the what the public shared in comment is compelling, certainly. So I'm generally supportive of the increase. Both met reflect what's already happening. I think we're in a tough spot with the way the code is written where there's a default level that's allowed. And then to go over that with successful business, you have to basically request an approval for that. By requesting this, we're hoping to set a reasonable level of allowing growth but keeping it at a, from being, you know, another massive impact of that intersection. So it seems to me we're hitting the right level. And I thought that was where I'd stated.
This is Commissioner Goldfarb. I, too, am in favor of approving this change. I'm concerned about the future and would urge staff if the applicant comes back again for an increase in the ADTs to really look hard at what the traffic was before this establishment began doing business at that location and what they're asking for rather than just simply looking at an increase. Because my concern is that if we keep going, stepping up, 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 we're not looking at what the real impact of the business is. So at this level, I'm comfortable but am concerned about the future.
This is Commissioner Chu. I voted against this last time. I'm going to vote against it again this time. Two main concerns. One is that, you know, maybe 480 is warranted, but the measurement verification, well, setting measurement verification I have issues with. You know, we're setting it at a number higher than their busiest time, but they want to measure it and any other time other than the busiest time. So it'd be setting for retail store, setting a goal based on Black Friday, 11, almost 12% above. You know what? They would see Black Friday and then measuring it at any other time. And if we go with like 338 for their, you know, normal business time, we're talking an increase of 18% over what they already see, which may or may not be warranted. And that's my other issue is that I don't see any data showing that the level of service doesn't suffer ever since, it doesn't show it suffers ever since the hack. But there's no comparison for today's level of service, which I find concerning, you know, 2041. Who knows what the ADTs allowed at that time will be? So I was really confused by, you know, why we were looking at 2441 numbers and not 2021 or 2022 numbers. So, you know, I feel like the the application is lacking as far as support goes. Thank you.
Yeah, this Commissioner Libby, I agree, David, that's a deficit of how it was reported in that the impact level of service at today's date is not reported there. And whether that's intentional or not, I'm not sure. That was part of what got me thinking about what are we really measuring, right? Which is if if today's average trips are at 340 or whatever it is, right? What is that increase likely to change is really an increase of potentially 60 up to 460 out of 800 and whatever that number is of daily trips in 75th to me seems like a small amount. And that's where I went about that line. But yeah, I agree. It's missing from the study.
Commissioner Bloomfield, I would say I'm generally in support. Sam, I like your your frame of, you know, the fact that that what we're measuring is what's already going on. And so we're not going to be increasing it that much. You know, some members of the public mentioned that we're taking data during COVID times. I think there's a reasonable argument there, although the most recent one was, I believe, in March. And so I think we're, you know, have started to return to normal at least a little bit. And we also don't have much of a choice. We can't, we can't undo COVID in order to take the trial of the traffic study. I don't, I don't think there is any ill intent there. It's just these are the times we find ourselves in. So, yeah, so I think that and your your concerns about the future, to me, those are handled by the fact that there's, I forget exactly what it was, but it's six months, a year and two years, I believe, was the interval for further traffic studies to make sure that it's not not getting worse. And yeah, I would agree that some kind of analysis for the impact of the near term to then 2041 would be, would be helpful. I know that that's probably some sort of traffic study standard. But I always find projections out 20 years to be kind of ridiculous. So that's all I got.
Any more discussion?
This is Commissioner Fitch. I would move that we approve and recommend approval to the county commission docket SU-21003 Smetana Partnership.
This is Commissioner Gorgano. Second.
Thank you. With a second, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll move to a roll call vote. Sam Libby, I. Dave Sue?
No.
Melanie Neskey?
I.
Lisa Gorgano?
I.
Mark Bloomfield?
I.
Sam Fitch?
I.
And Ann Goldfarb?
I.
All right, the motion passes. Thank you for your votes and discussion. Thank you to the applicant and to Summer.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
All right, let me get this here on our agenda and we'll move on to the next docket. All right. Our next docket is docket SU-21-0010, the Hess vacation rental. We'll be hearing a presentation from Sam, I think.
Thank you, commissioners. Sam Walker, CPMP staff. And I will be presenting on SU-2110, the Hess vacation rental at 741 Cabin Creek Road. So here's a vicinity map just to kind of orient everyone. This is off of Cabin Creek Road, of course, on the north side of Cabin Creek Road and east of Peak to Peak Scenic Highway in kind of the northwestern area of the county. Heather and Christopher Hess are applicants. The zoning is forestry. The parcel is just over three acres in size. It is a legal building lot. There's an existing 2,134 square foot residence. There's no expansion of that residence proposed as part of this application. And there's also a small shed on the property that's unpermitted, doesn't require permits. The request in this case is a special use review to permit the vacation rental that's proposed. It's going to be rented up to 160 nights annually between May and December with a two-night minimum stay and a maximum of four guests. So nothing particular to call out here. These are just kind of the highlights of what's required by the land use code in terms of a vacation rental. We believe as condition they should meet all of these requirements, but we can come back to them if we need to. So here's our location map. You can just see the parcel shape. And again, it's on the north side of Cabin Creek Road. So here's our location map. You can just see the parcel shape. And again, it's on the north side of Cabin Creek Road. Here's an aerial map. We'll kind of hang out on this map for a second. I didn't include a site plan that was provided by the applicant because I figured the aerial was probably good enough. So you can see the existing driveway, which comes off of Cabin Creek Road, extends west into the property. And then you can see that existing residence right here where I'm circling with my cursor. We're also going to talk a little bit about a large kind of cleared area that it's going to be used as an informal turnaround as well as a parking area. You can see that through the trees just south of the residence right here where I'm circling with the cursor. There's also one small parking space just directly east of the residence as well, but you can't quite see it. This is our comprehensive plan map, so there are no significant resources identified physically on the property under our comprehensive plan. I will note that there is a visual impact score associated with Cabin Creek Road in this area. That score can range from zero to five. And in this case, we've said it's a it's a low score, low, meaning that the visual impacts or the the potential impacts to the view from the road are maybe a little bit less important than if the score had been higher. We also have a little bit of geo hazards identified on the property. So small areas of landslide, high susceptibility, none of which are on the actual or in the area where the rental will be taking place for the most part. And then not really many public lands to speak of in the area other than some conservation easements to the north and then to the southeast. So again, I didn't include a site plan because I didn't think it really added anything that you couldn't see in the aerial. But right now we have pulled up the floor plans that were submitted by the applicants. This is the floor plan for the first floor of the existing residence. So you can see we have two sleeping rooms, as we would call them, bedroom one and bedroom two. And then a lofted second floor that is not a bedroom. This is the parking plan that was submitted by the applicant. So again, we've got that aerial photo to the left. And then they've kind of drawn this box showing the area where they're taking pictures of. And then over on the right, we can see a photo of the parking area. The small one directly east of the residence is what I mentioned and is right here. I'm circling it with my cursor. And then we've got this pretty large cleared area that you can see kind of in the four and the background of the photo. And we'll take a look at one that maybe illustrates it a little bit better in just a minute. So now we'll take a look at some site visit photos. This is the view east along Cabin Creek Road. I'm standing kind of on the driveway entrance in this photo and house to the left are the adjacent neighbors. In this photo, we're facing west into the property along the driveway. So you can see the driveway extending away from Cabin Creek Road and then through the trees, you can see that existing residence where the rental will be located. Now we're standing at the entry to the parking area facing back toward Cabin Creek Road, just trying to show kind of the distance of that driveway. And in this photo, just another view of the existing parking areas, I kind of stitched a few together. So hopefully it's still clear. You can see the existing residence. The county vehicle is parked in that spot. I don't think you could fit more than one vehicle there because of the rocks and the culvert. And then we have this large area that we're calling an informal turnaround. They'll need to confirm that with the fire protection district, and that's one of our recommended conditions of approval. I will say that there was also a bit of what looked like maybe an informal loop kind of around this vegetation in the back, but I don't think I have a photo of it. So in this photo, we're standing at the western extent of that large flattened area, just kind of showing how well it's cleared. Then in this photo, just turn to the south from the same spot. And so you can see Cabin Creek Road off in the distance. Just left this one in to kind of illustrate the the we don't have any issues with the potential visual impacts of the use, not that they're changing any of the existing development on the property physically. But the setback from the road is pretty decent and the view of the residence is pretty well shielded. And then this is the south side of the existing residence, showing the deck that was noted in the floor plan. So just a summary of the referral responses we received, most of them were pretty standard from our various referral agencies, including the building team who noted that they would need to meet the licensing requirements as all of our vacation rental rentals do. They would need to have an inspection done and they would need to do wildfire mitigation of some kind. The access and engineering team noted that they had demonstrated legal access. They couldn't park in the right of way. And that parking area appeared to be sufficient, but they do need a turnaround. So we need to confirm at the permitting stage that that informal area can provide the second park or the second and third parking space that the applicants need as well as acting as an informal turnaround without blocking it when there's three total cars parked on the property. And so those are reflected in our recommended conditions of approval. Her wildfire mitigation team noted that the property needed to go through the wildfire certification process and provide info about wildfire safety to renters. Then the public health department noted that the septic system that's onsite does have the capacity for the number of renters that are proposed. Staff received three public comments about the project, two expressed concerns that are pretty typical, at least in my limited experience for vacation rentals, worrying about outdoor fires getting out of control if the resident or the renters are having a fire outside that's prohibited by the licensing. So it's not really something that we can address or should address through this process. And then one person who was expressing some of those same concerns, but overall was not concerned about the actual use itself as long as they didn't have outdoor fires and things like that. Received responses of no conflict from several of our referral agencies, the County Parks and Open Space, the Boulder Valley Law Conservation District, Estes Park Power and Light, our own county conservation easement team, as well as Larimer County. And then you can see we got a list of people who sent no response whatsoever to our referral request. The highlights of that are the several Allen's Park area community groups and then the Boulder Mountain Boulder County Mountain Cabin Alliance. So I'll just kind of briefly touch on a few of the special use review criteria that I felt were more relevant to what we're discussing today. So the first one is use number two, or excuse me, criteria number two, which is the use compatibility. So whether or not the use that is proposed is compatible with the neighborhood. In this case, the the area immediately surrounding this property is mostly residential in nature. It seems to be a mixture of seasonal living and year round residents. I staff find that the proposed use kind of fits into that. It's not really a huge difference from a residential use. There were no concerns expressed by staff either from the development review team or the access and engineering team in terms of anticipated traffic. This is also not the first vacation rental that's been approved in this neighborhood. There was one just down the road approved back in, I want to say March or April of this year. And overall, we do find that the proposed use will be compatible with the neighborhood. The next criteria we'll talk about is number six, which is that the use will not require a level of community facilities and services greater than what's available. The recommendation or the recommended conditions of approval will ensure that we do get a response and a confirmation of a lack of issues from the Allen's Park Fire Protection District, which was one of the agencies from who we got no response to our referral request. But one of the recommendations for a condition of approval is that the applicants provide a letter saying that the use of that flattened area next to the residence as an informal turnaround is acceptable for the fire protection district. And then in terms of other public services and community facilities, the existing well and septic system can support the number of guests that's proposed on the property. So we have no issues there and we receive no issue or no response from the or excuse me, we received an issue struggling today. We received a response of no conflicts from the utility provider to the property. The last criteria that I put in is number seven, which talks about impacts to the multimodal transportation and traffic system. So they have demonstrated legal access to the property via a county held public right of way. There again, were no concerns expressed by any county staff with the amount of traffic that would be generated by the proposed use. And the recommended conditions of approval should ensure that the parking requirements are met on the property as required by the vacation rental standards in the land use code. So all that being said, the CPMP department recommends that the planning commission recommends conditional approval to the Board of County Commissioners for docket SU twenty one ten, the Hess vacation rental, subject to the conditions that were outlined in the staff recommendation. And I have those on the next slide if we would need to take a closer look.
All right. Thanks, Sam. What questions do we have for staff?
This is Commissioner Bloomfield. I just have a question about the open fires. So the the rental code basically says that there are no open fires allowed for short term rentals. That's correct, right?
Yes.
But I, so I guess there are some times where if the owners were occupying it, there might be a fire ban that still allows fires on private land where they would actually be able to have a fire. Is that correct?
Yes. So the my understanding of how the how the ordinance works is that the it only prohibits renters of the property from having outdoor fires. But if they're, if the actual property owners are on the property staying there, which is my understanding, they still intend to do periodically and eventually in their narrative, they discuss eventually discontinuing this use entirely and only using it for their family. That the ordinance wouldn't prohibit them from having a fire on the property. It will only prohibit their renters from having it.
Right, okay. And then one other, it's not exactly relevant to this particular, while it is relevant to this one, but I'm looking at the wildfire safety for short term rentals document that's in the in the packet. And I'm wondering why, given that the the open fires is such a concern, both just, you know, for fire safety, but also to the residents, it's nearby residents. That's what we often get comments on. It seems like, I mean, you've got the ready prevention section. And then one of the check marks is use of charcoal grill grills and all outdoor fires are prohibited. It seems like minimum putting that in bold and maybe putting it at the first line, all outdoor fires are prohibited would be super helpful. Because I I'm imagining that, you know, there are people who look through the book as they're renting and they don't necessarily read every line. But having like super bold, big letters, no outdoor fires are allowed would be helpful. Anyway, those are my thoughts.
Sure, I'll make sure to pass that along to our wildfire team. But I think that's a good, certainly wouldn't hurt.
Commissioner Libby, I had one question. You mentioned in your, at least your verbal intro, the idea of the rental being limited to between May and December. I didn't see that in the conditions or in the application necessarily. I didn't look that closely, but is that intended to be a a limit or just that's a reasonable seasonal limit?
That was, if I remember correctly, proposed by the applicants. I may have just neglected to put it into the conditions, but that I don't think they intend to rent it out outside of those months.
Okay, I guess the recommendation would be if that is intended to be a condition, we could add that for the commissioners. If if you do think that's useful to have, I personally don't think it's necessary if it's not needed, but as a question of accuracy.
Sure, it may be best that we just ask the property owners if they would like.
Sure. Yep, happy to have to do that. Thank you. Other questions? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move into the applicants if they'd like to present or speak. If they're here. And Heather's here, it seems. Heather, we can't hear you yet, but you're welcome to unmute and speak when you're ready.
Okay, this is Chris Hess and Heather will be here shortly. She had to take one of our kids to work. Can you guys hear me all right?
We can go for it.
Okay, great. Again, Chris Hess and Heather Hess, seven forty one Kevin Creek Road. Good afternoon, commissioners, Mr. Walker. Want to thank you for the time and Mr. Walker and the rest of the staff. Thanks for all your work on the package and the presentation. So just a little bit of background. We're we're in Nebraska. We have three daughters. We started going out to Colorado to actually Kevin Creek Road, where some friends of ours have a cabin back in two thousand and three. Fell in love with the area, thought that, you know, a dream of ours would have be have a cabin out there and and spend our time and when I eventually retired from the military out here at the National Guard in Lincoln, be able to spend our, you know, majority of the summers, you know, up to about a half a year out there. Put a plan together and it ended up working out and but unfortunately with our three daughters being in high school and and below, it's just so busy that they're not, it's just not feasible to get out there a lot. So in addition to generating income, we're looking forward to you know, sharing this experience and what brought us to Colorado and made us fall in love with the area and the state with with other families. So that's kind of the big picture, what we're doing. And it, you know, in the near to, well, maybe the five to 10 year timeframe, once I retire and the girls are all in college, then we expect to ramp down the the short term rental and, you know, share it with more friends and family and ourselves, actually. So so that really goes to speak to some of the concerns that were brought up by some of the comments. And and that is we're totally invested in this area. This this is not a, we didn't buy it to just generate income and we are there to to be a part of the community. So as far as the the, there are some concerns about fires and and people using outdoor fires, you know, we don't even do that when we're out there. It's just especially with last year's fires, it's just too big of a risk for us. So we don't have any equipment there that would allow people and with our caretaker and how often he would stop by, I think we can mitigate that issue. But really, that's the big picture. I think Sam covered most of it. We've looked into the turnaround. And there's actually a fact sheet on the website that gives dimensions and I did some rough calculations and I think that's going to work out. I'll have to work with or my wife and I'll have to work with the Allen Spark Fire District to to finalize it and get their approval, of course. But other than that, we don't have any issues with the requirements from approval that staff has proposed. The the one question about the May through December, you know, that was really, we wanted to give you as much information of our proposed use. We didn't offer that as a constraint. If you would like to constrain it to that, I would tell you I'm in the high ninety percent that we wouldn't do anything outside that timeframe. So if you feel like you need to constrain it, that's that's fine, but that's that's really up to you guys. Other than that, and I I don't have anything else to add. I think Sam covered it all. And I think we can mitigate all those all the requirements or meet the requirements that Mr. Walker brought up as conditional approval. So without all opening it up for questions and cede my time back to all of you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any questions for the applicant from commissioners? All right.
Okay, thanks for your consideration. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I believe we have no one signed up to speak on the docket. And so unless anybody wants to post in the chat, we'd like to speak. We'll move past public comments. No one on the phone and Anna, just to confirm, no names correct?
That is correct. I don't see anyone to sign up to speak for this item.
Okay, do we have any additional questions for staff or the applicant? I think so. Any comments, Sam, you'd like to make from staff?
I guess just that we probably don't need to add the May to December restriction to the condition. So I think we can just move forward. Other than that, nothing for me.
Okay. Thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and close public hearing on this docket and move into PC discussion. Any comments or motions from planning commission?
Commissioner Bloomfield, seems fairly straightforward to me, certainly hearing the applicant talk about their, you know, investment and concern for fire safety. Seems like a good response and and given the fact that it's, you know, not allowed by the ordinance to the concerns of the public. Good response to the concerns of the public regarding the fire safety. So I feel good about going forward with it.
Commissioner Libby, I appreciate the idea you brought up, Mark, about adding some kind of larger statement about fire, since it has come up, I think, in every vacation rental docket. I probably will keep coming up, but we might as well see what we can do to notify people. I probably will keep coming up, but we might as well see what we can do to notify people of that. I'm also in support of the docket, as is in the conditions that are, that are listed.
I will move to approve docket SU twenty one zero zero ten Hess vacation rental.
You want to add the conditions also?
Yeah, with the ten conditions in the.
Oh, with the ten conditions as stated in the packet.
All right.
This Commissioner Bloomfield.
Thank you, hearing a second. I'm just a brief question to staffs came up last time. I'm trying to remember where we ended up. Are we conditionally approving this or recommending it for approval with the Commissioners?
Sam Walker, CPMP, you're recommending approval to the Commissioners.
Okay. So I'll just have you maybe restate that, Dave. It's again misprinted in the agenda or in the staff packet as it was last time, but.
Okay.
Not your fault. Yeah, we're recommending, we're approving, recommending conditional approval to the county Commissioners. Not approving ourselves, just to be clear.
Okay, yeah, so we're recommending. We're approving recommendation of approval of the docket SU twenty one zero zero ten Hess vacation rental. With the conditions as listed in the packet.
Yep, thank you.
I'll second that again.
Thank you, Mark.
Commissioner Bloomfield.
Any discussion on the motion? All right, I'll take a vote again. Sam Libby, I, Dave.
I.
Melanie.
Hi.
Lishon.
Hi.
Mark.
I.
And Fitch.
Hi.
And.
Hi.
All right, the motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right, thank you, Sam. Thank you to the applicant. All right, our last docket for today. Is docket SU dash two one dash zero zero one one, the Dagnan Vacation Rental. And Hannah's here to present that, I believe. Go ahead, Hannah.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I am going to present docket SU twenty one zero zero eleven. The Dagnan Vacation Rental. Let me just bring out my PowerPoint here. And share my screen. Okay. I presume you all can see my presentation now. Is that correct?
Looks good.
Great. Okay, so this is special use twenty one dash zero zero eleven Dagnan Vacation Rental at fifteen oh six Riverside Drive. And I'm sorry, for the record, I am Hannah Hippley. I'm the Long Range Planning Manager of Boulder County Community Planning and Permitting. The applicants are Kelly and Dawn Dagnan, and they are requesting a special use review for a vacation rental. For up to eight guests and for a maximum of two hundred and forty days per year. And they are proposing a three night minimum stay on each rental. The property is in the forestry zone district. It's just under two and a half acres. It is a legal building lot. There are a number of structures on the property that we'll take a look at later in the presentation. But I just wanted to note in relationship to the first criteria for review and approval of special use related to zoning compliance. There are conditions of approval proposed related to that criteria. Noting that the applicants were required to get a vacation rental license. The prohibition on events that, you know, I think we're routinely kind of adding as conditions of approval to these applications. But also, there are two sheds in the floodplain on this property that the applicants have committed to remove. So that's also in as a condition of approval. Related to zoning and compliance with other requirements. The location of this property is shown here in red, along Riverside Drive. Just kind of down the canyon from the. Middle Saint Rain. And Peak to Peak Highway. As I noted, there isn't three night minimum stay and a maximum of two hundred and forty nights per year proposed by this applicant. And that is what we considered when we thought about compatibility. This property is located between kind of the more denser developed areas of Raymond. In Riverside, I think you can better see this on, that on this slide. So Riverside is here to the. North and east and Raymond to the south and west. The subject property is highlighted here in yellow and you can see in this area, there's a scattering of homes. About six others in proximity, rather than this kind of denser development that we have in Raymond and Riverside. There are some photos of this area. This is the closest home. To the adjacent, immediately adjacent to the subject property. And this kind of gives you an idea of the concept or character along Riverside Drive. It is kind of feels very remote and private there. As opposed to kind of like I said, this denser development in either Raymond or Riverside. So staff did find that this up, application as proposed could be compatible to the area that it was located in. And again, have proposed those conditions of approval related to the intensity of this use that we consider to find that compatibility. This map right here is showing you the various comprehensive plan layers associated. On this parcel and there are a number of them, mostly related to the resources and ecology along the middle Saint Rain Creek. And to address. That area, we have recommended a condition of approval that keeps the parking areas out of these, parking out of these more sensitive areas. And having those spaces be kind of formally defined with either, you know, a stop block or a sign or something like that. So people park in an area where they won't be destroying any of their onsite resources. Looking back again at Riverside Drive for sort of a different purpose, just transportation did look at this application. As we can see Riverside Drive is a paved county road. The property has direct access off of Riverside Drive. No impacts to the surrounding transportation network. Were anticipated to result from this application. These, this is the site plan associated with the app, with the application. Again, we can see the access point here along Riverside Drive. There's a driveway in, into, into the property where you reach kind of the parking area. Relevant to the transportation standard for a special use approval in the criteria, that criteria and the conditions of approval. Given the number of sleeping rooms, this application is required to have five parking spaces. Which they show on this site plan. They also show these two additional parking spaces that we are. Conditioning that they. Keep clear because this is the emergency turnaround. With these conditions, we are able to find that. The application will support a multimodal transportation system and not result in negative impacts to that system. Showing you the floor plans. There are four sleeping areas. Also shows you the smoke detectors, carbon dioxide detectors and the fire extinguishers, which will be. Reviewed at inspection for the license. This is the bottom floor, first floor layout. There is some discrepancy in the building permit record. And some. Likelihood that there was some finishing of this level done without a building permit. So there are conditions of approval in. The recommendation that require the applicants to permit. Any improvements that were not covered by the original building permit. And that would also require a floodplain development permit in association with that building permit. So those are included as conditions of approval. This property does sit at the bottom of a canyon right along the creek, so we do have some significant. Floodway, which is the dark blue. The hundred year floodplain, which the county also regulates, which is the light blue. And you can see the five hundred year floodplain is the orange. And there are a number of structures. Both in the floodway, there's a TP on a deck in the floodway. A deck was built off this. This side of the house, that looks like it's located potentially both in the floodplain. The five hundred year floodplain and perhaps the floodway. So, and then these two sheds in the floodplain that we noted earlier that the applicants already agreed to remove. These other two items do need to be addressed, however, and we've included that in our recommended conditions of approval. These conditions of approval help us find that the application will not result in unreasonable risk of harm or people to the property. So dealing with the natural hazard situation on the property. By addressing the floodplain development requirements of the land use code. Some site photos. I did say previously that there is direct access to Riverside Drive. So we can see the bridge in this photo. The other thing you can see. A little bit in this photo is this property is already wildfire partners certified, so they've already met that requirement of the licensing. Ordinance. There's the drive into the property. You can see the parking areas here on this side of the house and here. This shows you that the deck that I mentioned earlier was constructed without a permit potentially in the floodway. And so the other structures on the property has, this application was referred to the historic preservation. Folks and their referral responded that they didn't have any issues with these, with this use in particular, but. Suggested that if anything was going to occur with these older structures in the future, they. Might need to take a closer look at it at that point in time. And then these are the sheds that are in the floodplain and the, the TP that's in the floodway. We did refer this out as usual and received comments from the access and engineering, public health, building safety and inspection services. All of which have been wrapped into our analysis and our proposed conditions of approval. Again, wildfire mitigation team provided a referral response as did the county floodplain management team. I think we've. Talked already about the requirements of the floodplain management team, so I'm not going to go into further detail there. We did get a referral from historic preservation. Somehow I managed to leave it out of the summaries in the staff report, but. The referral itself was in your packet, so hopefully you, you did see that. We did get a comment from an adjacent property owner. He provided comments regarding vacation rentals in general and, you know, specific to this property as well. And provided a list of proposed mitigation measures that he, he thought were appropriate. Staff evaluated the special use criteria in section four dash six oh one of the land use code. I have highlighted in my presentation here today, the criteria where we felt conditions of approval were necessary in order for these criteria to be met. Otherwise, there were no conflicts or issues with the remaining criteria that came up during the review. So at this point in time, staff is recommending that the planning commission recommend to the board of county commissioners that this application be conditionally approved. That concludes my presentation. I can take any questions that you might have at this point in time and the applicants are on the meeting. I'm not sure if there's a presentation they'd like to give or not.
All right, thank you, Hannah. Questions do we have for staff for this time? Commissioner Libby, I just have one question about the, the unpermitted finishing in the basement. I haven't seen a conditioner on that before. I just want to ask for, for my knowledge, how that would work is that what you're asking the applicant to do is submit a building permit. To reflect the work that was unpermitted. And then the building department would handle review and inspection and anything that needs to be changed would be an investment they'd have to make to get that permitted?
Yes.
Okay. Great, thanks. I just hadn't seen it before. Any other questions? All right. And I think you mentioned, I'm not sure if they're here, is the applicant here to speak?
Is that an owner staff? The applicant's present and I've just promoted them.
Okay, Kelly, we can see you and you're welcome to speak when you're ready.
Hi, everybody.
Yep, we can hear you and see you fine. Welcome.
Great. I'm Don Dagnan. This is Kelly Dagnan. We live in Boulder, Colorado. We purchased this property, maybe fortunately, unfortunately, three months before the floods that were up there. That did, did a little number on our bridge. But the structures that, that you see that were there, they were there when we purchased the property, the two. Outbuildings, all, all of those outbuilding structures. And, you know, fortunately, even in that flood, our, our home was not impacted. At, at all during that, which was, which was great. But we're, you know, we, we understand, we understand those issues and, and we're going to do what we can to try to mitigate those and, and take care of those as recommended here. On the fire issue, which I heard from the previous presentation is important, we believe it's important. We, we went forward a while ago and got the certificate of wildfire mitigation, which was a costly process. We needed to get a number of trees taken out that were significant in our, in our property around the building. And we're already in compliance with that. In addition, the house that was noted that's the closest to our property next door is actually owned by my brother. He purchased it after we purchased our property. He lives in Denver. And he's up there every, virtually every weekend and checking on our property and, and lets us know what's, what's going on, on up there as well. On, with respect to the building of permit on the lower level. You know, we'll, we'll work through whatever we need to do there, but we, we have a set of plans that look like that we, they were approved. We've sent them in, but we need to, we've sent photographs of those in, but we'll need to get those. Reviewed by the city to see if they were sufficient, but the initial. Building plans that we have show the finish of a bathroom up down in that area and they were the ones that were stamped. Again, that's, that's an issue we'll deal with as a condition that's here, but know that we're focused on that. And with that, if Kelly, if you don't have anything to add, we'll answer any questions you might have.
All right, thank you. Any questions from Commissioners for the applicant? All right, hearing none, thank you for your comments. Move into any public comment. We have one person signed up to speak and then we'll go to the, go to the phone lines. Gary Brenner, I think is here to speak and you're first on the list. You could just share your address. You have three minutes.
Hello, this is Gary Brenner. Can you hear me?
Yes, again.
Okay, I live at thirteen oh five Seventh Street in Boulder. And I own the property that is immediately due east from the Dagnan property. And. The closest house to their house is my house. It's closer than Mr. Dagnan's brother. But I don't think that's the important issue for me. The issue for me is the impact on the community in general. And I've owned that property since before the Dagnan's house was built. And there have been fires in that valley. Fortunately, they have been put out quickly. Because we have a very proactive volunteer force that comes out and does that. If a fire were to occur in that area and get out of hand. There is a good chance there'd be loss of life because it's an extremely steep canyon. And there's only access through Riverside Road and the connector from Riverside Road up to. I think it's highway. I think it's highway uh, seven, which is a very, very steep road. And cars have gone over the side of that numerous times. So it's not a very good access road for a big piece of fire equipment. Now, I want to preface this by saying. I support what uh, the Dagmans are trying to do. I don't, I'm not against them having um, a vacation rental property there. That's fine. In fact, there's some advantages to having a little bit more um, activity, because there'll be a few more eyes to see what's going on. However, we've all seen wildfire situations once they get out of hand. And we don't want to be in that position. We want to do everything we can to uh, prevent. A situation like that. And so I came up with some suggestions that I think ought to be. A implemented for all vacation rentals. Um, and one of them is that perhaps we should ask people to set up some sort of monitoring system. That be connected to the internet. You could either have smoke alarms or even a video camera that was pointed at the structure. I'm hesitant to put a camera on every tree. I don't think we should. Uh, promote a situation which uh, possibly starts to lead us down the road of taking away people's individual. Um, privacy and rights, but putting uh, cameras at sites that are going to get. A lot of public use, and I think three day rentals qualify for that description, uh, would be a good idea. And I think it would be good to make that a requirement for all vacation rentals, that we set up some sort of a monitoring device. And again, it could be done with sensors, uh, fire sensors, or it could be done with video cameras. And what we would be doing here in effect is, oh, is that my time already? All right, well.
It is.
Okay, I had a lot more to say, but thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Gary. All your comments are on the record and you're welcome to submit further comments to planning, uh, but you know. Uh, is anybody else who wishes to speak? I see no other names and uh, nobody remaining on the phone. So I think we're good. Anna, is that right?
Yes, that's correct. There's.
Okay.
Further public comment.
Okay, great. All right, so we'll go from that. Um, are there any final questions from commissioners um, for staff or the applicant? Hearing none. Um, any clarifying statements Hannah would like to make?
I don't have anything to add at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll go ahead and close public hearing on this docket and move to our discussion and motions or movement.
Um, this is Commissioner Gargano. I'm, I was happy to hear that they're, um, you know, they've experienced flood and fire, so they they know why the. Conditions are there, and I think the conditions help us get to where we need to go. Um, I certainly think the idea of um, fire monitoring or something. You know, considering that seems to be the top concern in general with these houses, right? This wouldn't be something we'd add to this docket, but it might just be something to explore further as we think about. Just how that seems to be the top issue for folks when it comes to to approving these. You know, what are, what are the options there as we think about the future um, of these kinds of things? But otherwise, um, I mean, you know, ready to approve it.
Commissioner Libby, um, I'm also generally in support. My only, I guess, quibble was I don't generally like. Asking people to change things outside of what they've asked for approval on, like removing the sheds, et cetera. But I understand why that's a flood protection risk that we want to be working on, so I'm happy to include it. But yeah, I'm happy to move forward with the motion as I said in the comments.
Nobody has any comments. I'm happy to make a move. I move that planning commission recommends conditional approval of docket SU dash two one dash zero zero one one. The Dagman Vacation Rental uh, to the Board of County Commissioners with following uh, nine.
Yep.
Yep, nine conditions.
This is.
All right.
Commissioner Gargano, a second.
Thank you. We have a second. Any discussion? All right. All right, Sam Libby, I, Dave.
I.
Melanie.
Hi.
Leishen.
Hi.
Mark.
I.
Sam Fitch.
I.
And Anne.
Hi.
Correct, the motion passes. Thank you. Um, and that is our last docket for today, unless there are any other staff comments or items, we'll go ahead and close the meeting. Uh, any comments from staff?
No comments from staff, thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna move that we adjourn the meeting.
A second.
Thank you, Mark. We'll do a voice vote. Everybody say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. See you all next month. All right.
Thank you, commissioners. Happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Yeah, you too. Thank you very much.
Yeah, you too.
Yeah, happy Thanksgiving.
Take care, y'all.